Good to be with you guys. Welcome to our Mesa City Council's study session for the morning of Thursday, January the 14th. As I mentioned earlier, all of our council is present. The item that we have on our agenda for today's consideration is to hear a presentation by Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport staff and discuss the economic development of the airport, including the new air traffic control tower and the proposed development at Gateway East. I have the privilege of representing this council on the board at the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. So I'm particularly excited and looking forward to all the exciting news that's relevant to the airport being shared this morning. So, Mr. Brady, I think we have some guests from the airport that are here to update us on this, is that right?
Yes, Mayor and Mayor and Council, good morning. This morning, we have the Director for Mesa Gateway, well, Gateway Airport, I always call it Mesa Gateway Airport, Brian O'Neil is here with us today to share the presentation. Today's an important day for the airport, so he's gonna talk to you a little bit about what's happening also later this afternoon. So Brian, if you want to move forward.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor Giles, members of the council, really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning, to update you on all of the initiatives that are underway at the airport. You know, with COVID-19, we don't get our owners out to the airport as much as we'd like to, so we are trying to bring the airport to you so that you'll be able to see some of the exciting private development projects and some of the public initiatives that we're undertaking during the COVID crisis. So if I can just... Up this... Right? Great, there. Well, again, thanks. What I'd like to do today is focus mainly on the commercial air service and the private investment that is happening at the airport, and then talk about a couple of really exciting projects that are just getting underway. We're actually having an introductory promotional event today to highlight Gateway East, so really would like to talk to you about that as well. What we've really found is that Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport is unique. We aren't just a thriving regional airport, we're a 3,000-acre economic development project that just happens to benefit from having an airport with three 10,000-foot runways as part of its critical infrastructure. And as I mentioned before, I really want to focus on the commercial air service and the private investment, but you know, we've got a thriving pilot training program that's going on up there, two schools, North Dakota, University of North Dakota and ASU, operating pilot training schools out there. We've got a very active US Forest Service base here in Mesa. We also have a growing number of corporate aircraft that are calling Phoenix Mesa Gateway home. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to focus really on some exciting developments that are happening with the commercial air service. As you know, we've got three airlines, we have Allegiant, we have two ultra-low-cost carriers from Canada, Swoop and WestJet. Westjet currently isn't serving the airport because of COVID-related challenges associated with transborder flying. But one of the real exciting announcements that we've had recently is that Allegiant on June 2nd, Allegiant is gonna be starting some seasonal service to Jackson Hole. It's been very popular the first 24 hours, we're very successful with the pre-bookings, Allegiant is very happy. We've also got Houston that's starting in February and Traverse City, Michigan. So even during the COVID-19 outbreak, you can see where Allegiant continues to invest in Mesa and the Phoenix East Valley. So we're really pleased with that. You know, COVID has impacted us all. I think that it would be a fair statement to say that Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport is one of the few airports that is really leading the way in passenger recovery. You can see from this slide that, you know, much like every other airport, we were down 93% in April, but really, over the past several months, we've rebounded so that we're down between 20 and 30%. So that's remarkable considering that most other airports across the country are still down between 70 and 80%. And I think the reason is, is because we are a predominantly leisure airport, we do a lot of point-to-point, low-cost service, and other airports where they're dependent on business travelers or connecting activity or international travelers, those markets, those parts and segments of the industry aren't coming back as quickly as the leisure market. So we've really been fortunate, and we think as the vaccine continues to get more distribution that we're gonna get more people that are looking to reconnect with family and friends, and we're really optimistic about the remainder of 2021. Along with the increasing passenger activity we've had over the last several years, there's an increasing demand for better food, beverage, and retail concessions. So last year, we started on a really exciting program to up our game a bit with the terminal concessions. It started with the addition of Oso Brewery, we're really pleased that Oso Brewery offers a beautiful indoor-outdoor facility at the terminal now. We have the Suaro Mercantile Retail Shop, which is a traditional news and gift, but also it's got a real Arizona flair. There's some terrific Arizona-made products in there, and the passengers really are appreciative of the local flavor. And recently, we just opened up Panera Bread and where the old Paradise Bakery used to be. It's a beautiful new facility, we've got all the modern kiosks for ordering, it really has been well-received by our air travelers. And then as our passenger-
Brian, excuse me, Brian, I think Mr. Thompson has a question for you.
Councilmember Thompson, how can I help?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, has the non-passenger persons, I guess, have access to the restaurants yet? Or you're planning that? Because I know at one time, we had talked about giving access to non-passenger, non-ticketed, I guess, non-ticketed persons?
Sure.
Be able to get to Macao's and Oso's and so forth.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Thompson, we are planning on implementing that program. We had taken some strides forward with that before COVID, before the COVID outbreak. During COVID, it really hasn't gone anywhere, but as soon as the vaccine is distributed and we kind of get back to normal, we are gonna pursue that so that non-ticketed passengers will be able to get through and enjoy Oso and Macao's and some of the other upscale brands that we're bringing to the terminal. And then you mentioned Macao's. As passenger activity rebounds, we're gonna be closing down the copper plate, and in its place, we're gonna be constructing a Macao's Mexican restaurant and an infusion coffee and tea. Really, I think what we've done is we've improved the branding of the establishments in the terminal, and we've also added several new ones. What we found last year and the year before is that our revenue from non-airline operations like the concessions, our revenue was going up, but our revenue per passenger was staying stagnant or going down, and that was because we just didn't have enough variety and enough choice and enough establishments open to meet the growing need of our increasing passengers. So we're real excited about continuing to make those improvements, and by the end of 2021, we think that we'll have all the establishments open, and really, it's a benefit to the airport, it's also a customer service enhancement for all of our air travelers. What I'd really like to focus on today is the significant amount of private investment that's been happening at the airport. And really, I start with the Able Aerospace Services 50,000-square-foot Facility Edition. Yeah, this one opened a couple of years ago, but I wanted to mention it because the city of Mesa really was the driving force for bringing Able here to the airport. We really highlighted as our homegrown success story. They moved here from Phoenix, brought about 200 employees with them, they've continued to grow, they've continued to add to their facility, now they're up to about 700 employees, they're bringing in new lines of work and adding additional employees. So really, we're proud of Able, they were purchased by Textron several years ago, which is a global leader in the industry, and we think that Able will continue to grow at the airport in the future, and we're ready to assist them with their efforts. So, you know, Able is a homegrown success story that the city of Mesa can take a lot of pride in, because the city was the catalyst that brought them to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. The next project I'd like to talk about is the Gateway Executive Air Park, and this is now going through permitting with the city of Mesa. This is one of the few projects remaining on the drawing board, but it's a big one, it's 187,000-square-foot facility. They're building this in several different phases, but really, what they're looking to do is they're looking to attract both companies and private tenants to this large facility, and we're hopeful that in February or March, we'll start to see some dirt turn, and this project will be underway. We've all heard about Skybridge, Arizona for the last three years, really proud of Skybridge, exciting project, it's a 360-acre master development project, mostly focusing on aeronautical development, we're talking about logistics and air cargo. They've had a tremendous amount of success so far, they've gone through the master planning process, they've gone through the environmental process with the FAA, and now they've got several buildings up and operational and are proposing a hotel. So this is their first building, this is a 53,000-square-foot Flex Industrial Building that they built, and now they're negotiating with several possible tenants to occupy this building. They've also got an 82,500-square-foot hangar that they just finished on the ramp of the airport, they've already got a tenant, they've got a couple other large corporate aircraft lined up already for possible tenants in the other bays. So this project is moving forward, and as you can see from the jet on the lower left-hand corner, they've already got activity at the hangar.
Hey, Brian, I think Mr. Freeman has a question for you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, you answered my question, so I tried to wave the mayor off, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. There has been a groundbreaking for a new hotel, it's really at the corner of Velocity Way and Sauserman Road, it's 127 dual-brand hotel where a portion of the rooms will be for the transient one-night visitor, and then a portion of the rooms will be an extended stay product for, you know, those individuals that are either working with ASU or working with airport companies or working with someone else in the city of Mesa or the region that needs to have kind of a longer stay product. Real excited about this, the airport is working through the design, and it'll be with the city of Mesa for design review and permitting at some point in the near future. There's another company that works at the airport called APS, Aviation Performance Solutions, and what they do is they do pilot upset training. So whether you're a commercial pilot or you're a military pilot, they will take you up in their jets and they will put you into a nose spin or a tailspin or a dive, and they'll teach you how to get out of that, and they've been very successful because they have the same number of takeoffs as they do landings, so I think they're successful at what they do. It's an international company, they've got facilities around the world, but this is gonna be their corporate headquarters. This is a 65,000-square-foot hangar, they're building a portion of it for themselves, and they're building a hangar on spec, because we've got a number of large corporate aircraft that are looking to base in the East Valley that we just don't, the airport doesn't have the facilities to be able to handle an aircraft that large. So we're excited that the private community is stepping up and investing money at Gateway Airport to meet the needs of these large corporate tenants. Another project, this is a beautiful building, if you ever have the opportunity to get inside it, and again, I will always offer, come out to the airport, we would love to have you show you around. This is the Wetter Ventures 50,000-square-foot hangar, and this hangar was originally designed to handle two 737-800s that were going to be upcycled, it was a company from Belgium. I think they're still negotiating with that company, but because the building has been completed, I know that they've got two other very interested possible tenants as well. So we're excited, and we think that this building will be leased out pretty soon, and again, it's just a beautiful building. If you remember, before this building was built, this is where that old Quonset hut was located, so, you know, really changing the landscape of the airport. One of the reasons why I really appreciate being here today and talking with you is an exciting new master development opportunity called Gateway East. And Gateway East is a 400-acre mixed-use development opportunity, all non-aeronautical development, and it's located, really strategically situated, adjacent to Ellsworth Road, the expanding 24 and the Loop 202 Santan Freeway. We have been working for the past several years on this project, we have done an extensive commercial real estate market review and analysis of what is being developed in the region, where there may be some voids, and we're really excited to get this project kicked off. Later on today, we're gonna be hosting a promotional event virtually to introduce this project to large-scale, non-aeronautical developers across the country. We've got over 500 people signed up to participate in today's event. After the event today, we'll begin the process to go through, to try and select a new master developer for this exciting project. I would like to play a short video. Great. Thank you for that. Audio wasn't the important part, it was the video that was important. And as I mentioned before, it's a 400-acre mixed-use development opportunity, it's gonna be a strategic mix of first-class, high-end office product, some corporate retail, and also some industrial. And we really think that because of its strategic location and because of some of the natural voids that have occurred, there's a lot of residential that's being developed in the Phoenix East Valley, we've got a lot of industrial that's going on right now. I've been talking with the residents of Eastmark and of Cadence, and really, what they're looking for is they're looking for an opportunity to stay in kind of their neighborhood and enjoy some of the stay, work, and play opportunities that may not be available right now or may be limited right now. So we really think that there's an opportunity along Ellsworth Road to do the commercial retail, and, you know, we're not talking a big tire warehouse and a couple of drive-thru restaurants, we're talking about something a little higher caliber, something that they would be able to frequent and, you know, something that's a little above the fast food and the drive-thru opportunity. We really think that that will go well with the large number of residential units that are being constructed, and, you know, so we think that's gonna be one of the priorities. We also think in the short term, there's a high demand for some industrial development, and we'll continue to work with the new master developer to see where we can strategically put some industrial within this 400 acres as well. But I think the longer-term play, and what really excites me, is that, you know, if you look at first-class, high-end office park availability, you've got Rivellon in Gilbert, and Rivellon is a beautiful, beautiful project, but we think as the East Valley continues to grow east and south, you know, there's gonna be a lot of people that want to stay closer to home and work in the community where they live. So we think eventually, there's gonna be a real demand for a high-quality, first-class office park, and we think a portion of Gateway East will be that opportunity. So as I mentioned, later on today, we're gonna be doing the introductory video, and after that, we'll have a week where we can answer individual questions from interested developers, and then on January 21st, we're gonna be releasing a request for qualifications. And really, a request for qualifications is, tell us about your company, tell us about the projects that you've done in the past, give us your track record of success, who's involved in the project, and from that, we will go through those requests for qualifications, we'll kind of take the cream of the crop, we'll see which ones really best fit this development opportunity, and we'll invite a select few back to participate in a request for proposals. That'll be in the May timeframe, we anticipate we'll probably have four, six, half a dozen interested parties that kind of rise to the level that we're looking for. After that, once they are invited to participate in the request for proposal, it's really their opportunity to give a deeper dive, what's their vision for this project, where do they think that the starting point should be, what's the investment that they're willing to make, and really, how long do they think that the full build-out development will be? I mean, upon full build-out, this is, depending on product mix, this is gonna be nine or 10 million square feet of additional development, and it's gonna be a lot of high-wage jobs. I mean, this is a real exciting project, and I know Councilmember Thompson is excited that there's no residential involved in this at all, and we are too, quite frankly. So after the request for proposals, we'll bring companies in for interviews, and we're really hopeful that by the end of the year, we will have selected a qualified, experienced master developer to help us take this exciting project to market. So are there any questions about Gateway East before we move on?
Yes, thank you, Brian. Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Brian, it's been a while since we met on this project, but I remember when we sat down, you know, I was, you know, I wanted to make sure that what you guys were doing kind of melded in with, you know, my vision and what I was trying to accomplish in District 6, and I tell you, for my colleagues, that this was a perfect piece of the puzzle. I think by the time I left the meeting, the question was, when are you going to RFQ and when are you gonna stick a shovel in the ground and get this thing started? So this is very important to, not only to the airport, but to District 6 as well and to the city also, this is gonna be a huge generator of revenue, and, you know, it'll help be, it'll help make Gateway a destination location.
Thank you, Council. Other questions for Brian regarding the presentation so far? Thank you. Brian, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, members of the council. Another really important and exciting project for Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport is our new air traffic control tower. And this is a project that has been in the works for a long time. My predecessor, Jane Morris, was really the champion of bringing this project to fruition and bringing, you know, getting everyone, getting everyone in line to help to understand how important this project was, not only for Gateway Airport, but for the entire region. And I applaud Mayor Giles and other members who were back and forth to Washington DC to really, you know, carry the water on this project, and we finally were able to change federal legislation, we were finally able to get approximately $30 million from the federal government, and this project is well underway. In December, they poured 37 80-foot caissons as part of the stabilization for the base foundation. Next week, they're gonna be pouring a six-foot-thick bat slab that will serve as the foundation for the tower, and pretty soon, you'll see the steel starting to be erected, which is just really exciting. This tower is 55% larger than the tower that we currently have, the old military tower that was built in 1970. The cab is 100% bigger, we currently have four controller positions, this new tower will have eight, and we're real excited about it. You know, this tower will eliminate any obstructions on the airfield, it'll also give the controllers a much better view of approaching aircraft and will help them manage the airfield much better. So we're real excited about this. This project will be done in the summer of 2022, and you'll be invited to a kind of a ribbon-cutting and commissioning that we weren't able to do for the groundbreaking, and we're real excited this project is moving ahead, it's on time and on budget, and we will be christening this new facility in the summer of '22. That is the update on the airport for today. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the airport.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, I just have to reminisce a little bit about as a young man going out to Williams Air Force Base to the Air Force days and being out there to participate and see the events there, and my gosh, have we come just light-years ahead with all the development and taking it over back in the day. I remember all the, some of the controversy with that and getting the airport land dedicated to the city, but, you know, I just applaud you and your staff about all the things you're doing. And Councilmember Thompson, my gosh, this is gonna be a hub for economic development, and I just think it's gonna be a legacy for the city of Mesa and all the communities that participate, obviously, all the owners of it, I guess, but, Mayor, I'm glad you're on there and keep everything moving forward. So with that, this is just phenomenal, you know, going back, I hate to say, quite a few years ago, decades ago, and seeing it today, and the growth that can happen there. So I look forward to participating in it, and thank you, Councilmember Thompson, Mayor, and Brian and your staff. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Luna.
Hey, Brian, I just want to thank you for your leadership. You know, it's incredible that we've gone through this pandemic and the airport continues to flourish. What is your magic formula to ease developers coming in that despite the pandemic, that we're ready to have business here at the airport and continue to move forward? What is it? Tell me about that, how did that happen?
Well, Mayor Giles, members of the council, Councilmember Luna, you know, this is an airport whose time has come. If you look at the growth that is occurring in the greater Phoenix area, it's all in my opinion, it's all in the Phoenix East Valley, and, you know, I'm excited about what's happening at the airport. Quite honestly, there's a lot of times I feel that I'm just along for the ride, this thing is happening with or without me, but I'll tell you, we've got an incredible team of very talented workers at the airport and a lot of support from our member communities. You know, our ownership group, we really have a tremendous amount of broad support, unlike where I've ever seen in any other part of the country. Usually, there's a parochialism that comes in, but there is a regional support between our six members that it just doesn't exist in other parts of the country. So I thank you for your continued support, and again, this is, you know, the Phoenix East Valley is taking off, and no pun intended, and the airport is just going along with it.
Well, congratulate your staff as well, because I know Shay and others have worked really diligently to continue the economic development piece, as well as my colleague, Councilmember Thompson, has been very active to ensure that we have a very active airport. And thank you, Mayor Giles, for serving on the board, the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Board, to continue to encourage this, the development area. It's really prime for this kind of development, and your leadership along with your staff, as well as Councilmember Thompson and Mayor Giles. Giles, thank you for your efforts in moving this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Duff.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Congratulations again to everybody involved, Councilmember Thompson and the entire staff at Gateway Airport. This is quite exciting to see this development and seeing the balance of business, airport development, residential, all of this together. I know that State Route 24 is being planned and built. Can you go into a little bit how this feeds into the airport and what that timing is of its completion?
Sure. Mayor Giles, members of the council, Vice Mayor Duff, you know, I should have mentioned this earlier, but the city of Mesa has been a very active and supportive partner as we kind of design and look at the infrastructure necessary to unlock this 400-acre project. And as the State Route 24 continues to head east, there will be an exit off of State Route 24 called the Williams Field Road Exit. The Williams Field Road Exit, thanks to the city of Mesa and the investment that they're making in some really critical infrastructure, will serve as the front door to Gateway East. So as you are traveling east on State Route 24, you'll be able to exit off the Williams Field Road Exit, come down to Ellsworth Road, across Ellsworth Road, cross a new bridge directly into the Gateway East project. And really, that access and the support from the city of Mesa has been critical for us. And really, I think as we start to talk with developers, they're going to be impressed that we've already identified, you know, who's going to be our partner in helping put in the infrastructure that will really unlock this whole opportunity. So again, I think that State Route 24 is critically important, and I want to thank the city of Mesa for stepping up and being a partner in this project as well.
So Brian, what is the timing on State Route 24's completion? Or, you know, I need to go out there a little bit more to see where it is and what's anticipated.
Good morning, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Right now, State Route 24 kicked off construction several months ago, so they are actively moving dirt and under construction as we speak. They have about an 18- to 24-month build time before completion. So we're still talking about into 2022, before the fall of '22, before completion of the freeway. But they're looking at ways with ability to maybe cut that a little bit shorter. And they're optimistic that with incentives and other things for the contractor that they'll be able to complete several months earlier.
Thank you. I think in '22, we all need to keep our ribbon-cutting suit on because there's so much going on across the city. It'll be an exciting time and something to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council, other questions or comments on this agenda item?
Brian, let me add my voice to those that have congratulated you on the great success of the airport. It has been, as Mr. Freeman kind of reminisced, for those of us who remember when this was an Air Force Base, you know, it really has been fun, you know, to watch this, the development out there unfold as we all had hoped and prayed that it would, you know, 25 years ago, when the city of Mesa kind of jumped into the deep end of the pool, you know, with this project and has been nurturing it for this long. And the reason why is evident in the presentation that you just made today. When I go out there for groundbreakings and ribbon-cuttings, I'm always telling people, take a mental picture, you know, look around. You're not going to be able to see, you know, the horizon and the Superstition Mountains for much longer because this is the last frontier of Mesa. And the next time you drive out here, it's going to be covered with buildings and people and cars. And that's all by design. This is where the jobs and, you know, a lot of the economic activity that's going to be an anchor for our community is happening right now. So it's been mentioned that you've got a great staff, Brian, and I just want to echo that. And you've done a great job of assembling a great staff. So congratulations. And I think also really congratulations to all the folks who, the tens of thousands of people that are moving out to Southeast Mesa. The economic development that's occurring out there that you just described is really, I think, some of them feel it's long overdue. So, I mean, the quality of life of a lot of the residents out there is really going to take a giant step forward when a lot of these projects come online. And we're all looking forward to the tower coming online. I think it's going to be really the best, one of the best infrastructure airports in the country, you know, with those 3 10,000 square foot, or 3 10,000-foot-long runways and a brand-new, state-of-the-art tower. I think we're going to be really the envy of every airport in the country. So again, congratulations to you and your team for doing such a great job of advancing the airport.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, members of the council. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and update you today. And again, I will extend the offer. Any of you ever want to come out to the airport for a tour and see the exciting progress in person, you're all invited and welcome to come.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, council, unlike Monday, I mean, Councilmember Spillsbury's going to be disappointed. We're going to get her out of here, you know, before it's dark. This will be a shorter meeting. But so the next item on our agenda is the current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, let's start with Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. You, along with Vice Mayor Duff, attended the regional FAFSA drive-through, if you will. And I don't know, any of you trying to fill out FAFSA can find it very cumbersome and very difficult. The city of Mesa partnered with our educational institution to provide members of our community an understanding how to fill the FAFSA. So it was a good event to attend, and that took place at the Mesa Convention Center. Also, the Falcon Field Health, it's as the airport meeting, they're going to be holding this meeting once a month. It's a 30-minute meeting, so anyone in the area that's interested on the airport and wants to ask a question about what's going on in the airport will have an opportunity. So this is open to the public, particularly to those businesses and tenants in and around the area that have any questions about the airport. And it was a successful meeting, and I look forward to attending the next meeting, which will be sometime next month. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. And I know there were other council members that attended that FAFSA event that we kind of staggered, you know, over a period of time. So thanks to all the council members that supported that event. Who'd like, who else would like to share what they've been up to? Councilmember Duff, you can't, you know, coast now that you're the vice mayor.
I know, I know. In like two short days. I will just add on about the FAFSA event, that there were people from all over the state and city coming to this event. It was reported to me that there was a family from Tucson who drove to participate in the event to make sure that their family registered on the FAFSA or the application was filled out. I spoke to a family, a mother and daughter, and they had driven in from Santan Valley. So it shows you the need, and the volunteers that were out there were tremendous. They were out there, and they would spend up to an hour with the family, helping them navigate the application. So this is so critical to regenerating after this and seeing our young ones getting the education they need through the opportunities from simply filling out an application. So I'm very excited by the event and thank the entire staff and all the volunteers that made it possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And we should probably note that even though the event's over, there are still resources available to help families complete the FAFSA application. For those who don't know, this is, you know, the free application for federal student aid. So if you've got, if you know someone in high school who potentially, you know, could benefit from some federal assistance to continue their post-high-school education, you can still reach out to Mesa Accounts on College, other resources at the city of Mesa, and don't be intimidated by filling out that form. Also, it's an important part of the Mesa College Promise that I know we're all so supportive of, to get our Mesa High School students into Mesa Community College and other options. So, and the FAFSA is kind of a gateway, a gate to get into that program as well. So let's continue to help people get their FAFSA filled out. Okay, council, other comments or events you'd like to share with us? Seeing none, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll see you next Thursday morning for our next study session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you very much. We are adjourned.